Good evening again to everyone. We're going to start our May the first twenty twenty-three school board meeting and prior to that, we're going to have our Blanche Student Council. Ms. Amber Linty has her folks and they're going to do the pledge and invocation and tell us what's going on at Blanche School. If y'all will take the podium.
My name is Luke Parks. I'm in eighth grade and I'm the student council president.
My name is Jason Kimbrough. I'm in the seventh grade and I'm a student council vice president.
My name is Luke Bayless and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Reagan Nichols and I'm in, I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Tegan Parks. I'm sixth grade and I am junior vice president.
Let us pray. Father, thank you for the teachers and employees of our school system. We are grateful for the investment they make in our future. Tonight, I pray for our school board members. Please give them wisdom as they make their right decisions and bless them for their service to our community. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, uh, I want to, do we have any leadership linking or guest here? I apologize, I missed Tracy Cowan last week. Uh, my apologies to her in that, or the last board meeting. Before we start again too, today is National Principals Day and we want to thank all the principals at what they do in our buildings each and every day. Uh, and it doesn't go unnoticed, but we appreciate what they do. The other item is to take care of who takes care of us. Uh, we've got from the board, this last week was professional administrators day and the board has gotten Miss Karen Putnam something for our little small token of our appreciation, what you do for the board.
Thank you very much.
Item one is consider approval of April third twenty-three, twenty twenty-three board minute meetings, meeting minutes. I'll get there eventually. Do I have a motion approved? Mr. Tucker moves. I have second.
Second.
Ms. Tomlin, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is consider approval of agenda. The addition that we had was under facility use. We'll add Roma's pedals and that was at your table. Dr. Heath, do you have anything?
Uh, let's see. So I think everything just follows up.
Everything, uh, how about the executive committee?
Well, I put that somewhere I thought.
Okay.
Well, hold on just a, I, I put it under the committees.
Okay.
We'll add it then and it'd be allowing the executive committee to meet with the commission if needed with any results of nego, on this.
Okay, so that's where you have that, okay.
Yeah, so that'll be under that.
Committees, uh, the approval of the executive committee to sign the food service agreement, is that, do you have that anywhere?
That's A.
That's A under other?
A under other, I'm sorry.
And stipends?
And stipends is noted. If I'd have highlighted them like I did everything else, I'd be on game, wouldn't I?
All right.
Yes, so we're going to add approval executive committee to sign the food service agreement is A and stipends is noted that the work session is B under item six, other, other added items.
And then the other things, uh, regarding the pilots, uh, that's under the budget, okay, and, okay, that's all there, that's all I have.
Sorry.
That's all.
Uh, any board member gains anything to add? Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Fuzz makes a motion to approve. I have second. Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is Mr. Orion Patel, student advisory report. You go there and we won't make you stand right amongst us.
Yep, that'll work.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as we all know, the school year is coming to an end very soon. With that, at the high school, we are saying our fond goodbyes to our seniors who will be graduating later this month. This past weekend, we also held our senior prom. Um, and as the end of the year rolls around, so do end of the year exams. We just finished the last day of testing today and because of our outstanding performance with end of the year testing, we'll be holding another field day this year on the fifteenth to reward our students for another great school year and for working so hard. We still have finals coming up, but due to the new absent policy, many students won't have to take them. The policy has created a huge increase in attendance at the high school. We also have many of our clubs advancing to national competitions, uh, including FBLA, HOSA, and FFA, which will, which they will be attending later on in the next couple of months. Um, over the summer, as our spring sports come to an end, our fall sports will begin practicing. And this summer, our theater department will also be holding a new summer musical. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, and I, and an oversight of mine too, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Mr. Cole Bradford tonight. Uh, I should have done that to you. Uh, item four is the election of the vice chair that was vacated when Ms. King moved out of her district. Uh, I will accept nominations for vice chair at this time.
I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Kevin Posey, please.
Okay. Ms. Haynes makes a nomination of Kevin Posey. Ms. Tomlin?
Nominate Mr. Tucker.
Um, Martha Tomlin nominates?
Sammy Tucker.
Mr. Sammy Tucker. Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
Some move.
Mr. Tucker, do I have second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, on that, role call me please, ma'am, of your, your vote, this is a vote for vice chair. Uh, and state your vote as we go. Who can you start with? Yep.
Mrs. Haynes.
Mr. Posey.
Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Stevenson.
Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Tucker.
Me.
Mr. Posey.
Mr. Tucker.
Ms. Tomlin.
Mr. Tucker.
Dr. Daniel.
Mr. Posey.
Mr. Bradford.
Tucker.
Six two, congratulations, Mr. Tucker. Next, on, under the appointments of committee members, I'm going to, since Ms. King is off of, and out of district and no longer board member, I'll add Mr. Cole Bradford would be to our policy committee. The next will be a salary committee as we discussed at our work session. Uh, and that would be comprised of Mr. Martha Tomlin as chair, Mr. Cole Bradford, Mr. Kevin Posey, and Mr. Sammy Tucker. And that will be to take that, those components that was discussed at the la- last work session as far as the technology, the maintenance, and two of them, oh, county sc- school bus garage mechanics. Under that deal, we will be allocating a fund in the, in the budget process and then it would be all to apply those rates to the new, to develop a new scale. And this would need to be done by June the twenty-sixth for the board bid to be presented to the board meeting to incorporate it from that. And the last, under appoint, on committees is, uh, I would like for someone to have a motion to allow the executive committee to meet with the commission if needed with results for the board on anything to do with Highlandland School. Mr. Fuzz makes a motion for, in that effect, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tucker, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. It carries. And anything that is discussed is to be brought back to the board. There's no action by the executive committee in any shape, form, or fashion. This would just be to come up with something if need be to bring back to the board and it would have to probably be a special call board meeting at that. I don't think we'll be needing it, but we'll have it if we need it. And then, let's go to item six is other added items and that's approval of executive committee to sign the food service agreement. Y'all saw that email from Ms. Brinley that she sent out just three weeks ago, four, I think, that it will not come in or get back until after the next board meeting and it would, and we know the results of it that we saw and SFE's got it, but it will take somebody to have to execute it after it comes back. I'm assuming from the state, am I saying that right? So, I need a motion to that effect to allow the executive committee to execute.
I'm making a motion that the executive committee can execute.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Ms. Tomlin, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. And then next one, Dr. Heath, uh, the stipends, if you will discuss that.
There were three stipends that were presented to you at the last meeting, the budget meeting. That was to raise the, uh, raise the robotics stipend to a five percent stipend, I believe. It was to, uh, create a two and a half percent stipend for strength and conditioning. Uh, a coach to do that in the off season or throughout the year for our all kids. And the high school had requested a, another, uh, another coaching position for football since they're going to have a freshman team this year. And that was at five percent. Uh, those total dollar amounts, Jackie or Vicki, was that like twelve thousand or maybe less? Oh, fifty-two twenty-four, okay, yeah. So that, that's what that, that request is, to approve those stipends to be part of our stipend plan. And on the football one, if, uh, uh, if it's, if it's a situation where, uh, say next year or the year after, all of a sudden, the teams we're playing don't have freshman teams and we don't have a freshman team, or we don't have to, games to play, then I think that stipend goes away with the games, you know? They need to be there. So, uh, that's what, that's what that is.
Is this stipend, we're paying it out of next year's budget or are we paying part of, of an increase like for robot?
No, it'll be for next year.
Next year, okay. Do I have a motion? Pose and boom, through. Ms. Haynes, second. Any other discussion on those stipends? And we did say, we got, remind us, when we get, after we get through this budget process, we need to, we, that was one thing we said we would do is look at all the stipends in the next year's budget. So we need to tag that for us. No other discussion, uh, role call me please, ma'am.
Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Ms. Tomlin.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Mr. Bradford.
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes.
Aye.
Eight and zero.
Eight, zero, motion carries. Uh, there is no policies. The next item eight was consider approval of these contracts. They are all in the draft. And these all in, are encumbered by budget line item, correct? There's not new money, we're budgeting for them, correct? That we would have to vote on, so.
I'm looking.
And run up staffing, we'll be voting.
I, I, I would say, let's, I want y'all to discuss staff easy because we've got some folks here that can talk about it.
All right.
And describe it to you better than I can.
Are those other fo- other four good though?
I think they're all.
What about the food service management contract? I mean, that'd be discussed too, even though we're going to vote on it and then we didn't say nothing.
Well, uh.
Cause it's not being signed, but, let, let, let's just do, let, let's just do, we're doing one at a time. I'm sorry. I should have looked, I should have caught that beforehand. That's my fault. The first one is Ed- Edmonton Courseware Virtual School Curriculum. Dr. Heath.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, it's, it's a continuation or it's just a new contract, anybody? Is this virtual? This is for, the virtual piece? Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Any, do I have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Mr. Tucker, motion. Ms. Haynes, second. Any discussion further? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to roll? Is that new mo- is that coming out of a new dollar budget?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's a reduction from what we had.
In the lineup, okay.
So, yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Uh, next is.
Uh, for Follett, Ms. Hunter, is that you up there? Can you speak to Follett, please? So, this is not new money?
Any questions for Ms. Christine? Is that the Baptist crew up there? Y'all on the back row? Anybody got any other question? Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Tomlin, motion approved. Mr. Dunn, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. All right, now back to the one, staff E Z, Dr. Heath.
Staff E Z, uh, first presentation that I remember, it was about a year ago, which I was introduced to this concept, uh, in which we basically contract with staff E Z and they contract with people to work for us. Uh, you know, I, I think our first meeting we had, we were talking about hard to staff positions at the time. Uh, since then, I've talked to my, a good friend who's a superintendent in Cogeville, I believe, uh, well, in Cogeville, and I believe they use staff E Z for a lot of their tutoring, uh, Jo- uh, Manchester City. So I've talked to other school districts that are using, uh, this concept. Uh, and I think it, I, we've invited the folks here tonight to answer questions about it because it would be, uh, if we had an employee who, who maybe could, wanted to retire and draw retirement, but keep working. Uh, you know, the state allows that for a certain number of days a year or whatever. We could do it through staff E Z. Uh, if we wanted to contract with them to find, uh, substitutes for us or teachers in certain areas, we could contract with them and, and they would do that. And, uh, it's a situation where the employee actually can make more money. We would be cost neutral at worst, worst case. And, uh, but the employee would still be working under our direction, uh, and we would have final say on, on who that is and all, you know, those things. So, you, one of you guys want to do a much better job than I just did in talking about this?
Sure.
Okay. I, I'd like to say this too. Ms. Brinley, uh, spring has met with these guys and, uh, she's the one who really wanted this to happen. I think maybe, uh, I don't know if maintenance did, I know transportation did. Uh, Ms. Brinley can't, couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, I think the example she was giving me was that, uh, she could hire some folks for the cafeteria making two, three, maybe even four dollars more an hour, uh, at a cost neutral setting or at least a couple more do- dollars an hour than they would make if, if they were hired from us by them going through this process with the benefits and, and working through E Z staff, staffing E Z. So, uh, you know, she, she definitely wants to take advantage of that. And I think some other folks in the county would too. Uh, and it's a, as Superintendent Manchester said, uh, have a great working relationship and it's, uh, it's very positive for them, so. So I'd recommend approving the, the contract.
Now, this being a multi-year, will it have to go to the commission if that's still the case? Before you sign?
Yeah. So we probably need to do. Uh, multi-year, uh, but it's no commitment of money unless we.
Does that matter?
I don't know. I, that was just something you might want to check into.
I will check into it.
Before you sign. Yeah, it, it says that one will expire on June thirty twenty-five, so it made me, it made me think it was a multiple years beyond one term.
So, it's, okay, I'll, I'll find out. I'll find that piece out and we'll definitely either make it a one year with a renewable or, uh, whatever the commission does.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Fuzz makes a motion to approve the staff E Z contract subject, the confirmation of the nominee has to go to candidate commission to approve. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tucker, second. Any discussion? I Google them every which way I could Google and they pop up, but I, I don't, I don't find anything negative.
And.
Anything I looked at.
And I, and, uh, I need to read what Ms. Brinley, she asked me to please tell the board this before they voted is, uh, that she called Union County and Franklin Special School Districts Child Nutrition Departments. Uh, they both use staff, staff E Z and both had great positive reviews of the company. Uh, and the only negative was that there may be a time that they don't have a hundred percent fill rate on substitute, which. I understand.
Any other discussion? Role call me please, ma'am.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Ms. Tomlin.
Aye.
Dr. Daniel.
Aye.
Mr. Bradford.
Aye.
Mrs. Haynes.
Aye.
Mr. Dunn.
Aye.
Eight, zero, motion carries. We appreciate it. Uh.
All right, very good.
The next item is the Tyson. Bye-bye. Tyson beef processing bid, uh, she, he was in the drive and that's, that's just in our regular operating budget. Is, do I have a motion to prove that bid?
Some move.
Mr. Tucker moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tomlin, second. Uh, any other discussion on it? Uh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. The next one is the food service management contract and that's the one we're discussing about us executive committee.
Yeah, that one, that one needs to be removed from here and it'll be brought up after.
Yep. But that's the one that we had already seen in our drive that she said SFE got the deal, but had to go through the state. So, we'll strike that and that'll be executed at executive committee. Now, item nine, maybe I can do it this time. I'm going to lump all those together unless somebody's got objection to pull those out separate because they all meet the cri- or the criteria has been met. Do I have a motion to approve them?
Some move.
Ms. Posey makes motion to approve. Ms. Haynes, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Those are all complete. All right, now for the fun stuff. Is item ten is considering approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual budget. And Dr. Heath, just kind of give an overview of all, of, of where we're at with those things that come through on enhancement since we.
Okay. Uh, I've got it up on both screens. Basically, this is, uh, uh, taking everything that was discussed at the last meeting and getting it into the, uh, into the spreadsheet in some form or capacity. Uh, and you can see the numbers on here. There's some changes from last time, uh, obviously. Um, capital, let me just start at the top. Staffing is, you know, everything that, that I recommended is in there. So, uh, you guys approved, you know, approved that, or you didn't approve it, but you had it at the last meeting. So staffing is in there. Uh, that includes, uh, five percent salary, uh, increase for all staff, uh, for professional and for support staff. Uh, it includes the teaching positions, ESL, GP, uh, placing the Family Resource Center and social work, uh, director and social worker on a teacher pay scale, uh, modified, uh, in regard to annual steps and, uh, special ed positions in several places there. Uh, again, Ms. Campbell, when she gets to that point in her budget, it may pay for some of these positions, uh, one, in the special ed budget, the federal budget. Uh, the bus driver and the attendant, uh, so that's the staffing piece. Uh, going back to this page, again, uh, the materials and supplies, that forty thousand dollars was, if you recall, a correction, not a correction, but getting the, the money we have to move over or amend every year for pre-K, getting it in the budget as pre-K so that that doesn't have to happen because there's been several years of, of dollar amounts, uh, having, having to be amended and so forth. Technology, uh, that money is, uh, for potential future, uh, salary and it's based on our discussion that, that you had, that we had last week, uh, where the committee that was appointed tonight will be looking at, uh, those pay scales. Uh, so that's, that's what's in technology now. That's the only thing that's in technology. Uh, going back to the fund balance page. Uh, capital projects, that's Lincoln County High School gym renovation, floor bleachers, and then the renovation of the theater, uh, combined in there, one point two five million. Uh, grounds and maintenance, uh, if you recall, there were several items that were inflationary adjustments, uh, and then additional dollars, uh, that were put in there for that committee to have. And then additional dollars, uh, that were put in there for that committee to have, uh, if, if the committee comes back with a recommendation on the salaries in the maintenance department. So that, there's money in there for that too. And going on down to transportation, uh, same thing, and I'll pull that one up, uh, there were several things. First of all, the bottom of the page here was all the, uh, all the adjustments made for inflationary reasons. At the top was the, uh, the dollars changed, or the dollars recommended for staffing. And as you can see, the change in the bus drivers, uh, it, daily routes, what, uh, Jackie, daily pay for bus drivers in this budget is now eighty-four dollars per day? Or eighty, it's eighty-something, right? Eighty-seven maybe, okay. Uh, and then the social security, all those were, were checked out by them, uh, by our finance department. And as you're going down through here, uh... There's money in here to raise the mechanic's daily stipend for driving from thirty-two dollars to forty dollars and sixty-four cents. That's, that number sounds a little weird, but it's to basically, uh, be the same percentage as was approved up at the top, uh, up there. And then this money here, this fourteen thousand seven hundred forty, uh, seventy-eight, seven hundred forty-eight dollars is for that committee in case the committee looks at salary scales and says this department, uh, you know, let's modify the salary scale. So that committee, there's money in all three of those places for your, uh, mechanics, for your maintenance folks, and for your technology folks, for that committee to look at and look at those salary scales. So that's, uh, that's what the technology piece is back on, on the first page here, the fund balance page. Uh, as you can see, uh, total enhancements was three point seven eight million, and that leaves our fund balance, uh... Projected fund balance, June thirty of twenty-four, uh, at the seven million dollar position there on this sheet, so, seven point one. Anything else?
Is it your recommendation on this budget?
Yes, most definitely.
Do I have a motion to accept the budget in its entirety as presented?
Somebody...
Mr. Bradford makes a motion, I could, I, I was looking over. Mr. Tucker, second. All right, any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, while I fully support the, uh, school operating budget and the, uh, five percent raises and bonuses for all the, uh, full-time school employees, I would like to make a motion.
We, we, we've got a sec, we, we don't...
This is an incidental motion that can be made on top of a motion, before you vote on the main motion.
We, we, we don't have a motion approved. You can amend that motion. I've got a, I've got a first and a second on the...
Right, you've got a first and a second on the main, and I'm making an incidental motion that can, that has to be voted on before you vote on the main motion.
But is, what, what, is it germane to the overall budget as a whole?
I, I haven't got to my motion yet. Am I allowed to give my motion?
Uh, you can amend the, amend the...
Now, my motion has to be second, and if it's not second, then it goes straight back to voting on where we were.
Correct.
Correct, right, but I get to make an incidental motion.
Uh, I would, give me a...
Parliamentary law says I can make, says it takes precedence over a main motion.
Give me a five-minute break.
Uh, yes, I would like to make the motion that the amount of the proposed raises for the director, the school maintenance, school mechanics, and the bus drivers be divided from the main budget and be discussed and voted on separately from the main budget.
Uh, that's out of order on the director, I know, because you have a signed contract approved to the board. You would have to be renegotiating.
I under, I understand that, I've read, I read the contract, but what I'm thinking...
It's not what, I mean, it's, that, you cannot void a contract that has been executed. You would have to renegotiate a contract.
I'm well worded, I'm well aware of the wording in his contract, but I feel that it was never the intent of the board to give the director both raises. That it, that it was built in as a protection for the superintendent, so that if the local and the state did not give a raise, the director automatically got his two percent raise. Otherwise, he's getting a raise that's more, that's, that's above what the teachers are getting.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The word additionally, what does that mean to you? Additionally, it's pretty meaningful. This and additionally that.
Okay, what I've been told, what I've been told is you get, you, you're gonna get at least seven percent. Cause you're gonna get five percent, the bonus.
So why haven't you brought this up since this contract was signed? This contract has been in place for years.
Cause I was just aware of it the other day.
So you didn't read it last time?
That this two percent was a cost of living.
The other board, the other board members at the table voted on this contract. You're saying the board members did not understand the intent.
That didn't even come up at, that didn't come up at the work session.
Everybody got a copy of the contract, Dr. Daniels. Everybody got a copy of the contract.
That's right.
And they voted their conscience on the best of what they felt their constituency wanted in that contract.
My contract will be up again in two years and you can try to modify it at that point in time.
We can redo the contract, yes.
But if you try to cancel a contract that you have with me right now, we'll be...
I'm not trying to cancel a contract, all I'm saying is, I don't understand why you're getting seven percent.
You're trying to change it.
The rest of the teachers are getting five. That's all I'm asking.
Cause that's, that's the contractual agreement that this board has with me.
So if that, I mean, that's the contract, it's the contract.
We got a motion that you, that you named off to modify all those positions.
There was, there were three, there were three where they were getting the raises, and I thought, you know, I thought we just needed to discuss the twenty-seven percent raises that the, that the bus drivers and the mechanics and the...
We've had two, we've had two work sessions for Ed Bart with two weeks prior and in a month's notice of where we're at.
Well, the place you need to discuss this is in a public meeting where it's recorded. That's what a, that's what a board meeting is for, is to discuss these issues. You can vote against them. That's, you know, that's fine. And I don't even have a second, so I might not even get a second, this may be all muted.
Do I have a second? Motion fails. Now back to our original motion in its entirety, we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Ms. Tallman?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Uh, because of the reasons I stated, I can't vote yes for this, it's a no for me. Even though I still support five percent raising for teachers and bonuses.
We have your vote. We have your vote, sir.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes? Mrs. Hanes? Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Eight of one in the last, I mean, seven of one in the last.
Next item, thank you all for the vote. Next item, under the item ten will be the motion on the Highland Rim Schools with a forty million dollar price tag and the addition to reimburse for the land and architecture and engineering fees. Do I have a motion? That's estimated.
And this is to go present to the Budget Committee tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, yes.
That's correct.
I make a motion.
Ms. Tallman makes a motion to approve, uh, motion, uh, approve the motion to go before the County Finance Committee tomorrow night on the forty million dollar plus reimbursement for land, architect, and engineering fees.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Bradford, you got, got a second. Any other discussion on it? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Ms. Tallman?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Mrs. Hanes?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Eight, zero, congratulations for Highland Rim to start the journey if we can get there. Next item is a motion, as we discussed at the work session, uh, for asking the commission to adjust the pilots that they receive and those dollars that are allocated for the school system of our normal share to go toward the one seventy-seven account, which would maybe offset future expense and not have to borrow as much money or borrowing money down the road on future capital expenditures.
I make a motion.
Mr. Tucker makes a motion to approve it in that manner. Ms. Tallman, second. Any discussion on that? Roll call me, please, ma'am.
Ms. Tallman?
Aye.
Dr. Daniel?
Aye.
Mr. Bradford?
Aye.
Ms. Hanes?
Aye.
Mr. Dunn?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Ms. Posey? Eight and zero.
Eight, zero, motion carries. Dr. Heath, you may adjourn to the bus list.
Okay.
Next item, did I miss anything? I don't think so. Next item, eleven, is consider approval of outstate overnight field trips listed below. Lincoln County High School Cheerleaders to UAH, Lincoln County High School Host at the Dallas Texas, June twentieth through twenty-fifth. Lincoln County High School FBLA to Atlanta, Georgia for national competition, June twenty-sixth through July one. Lincoln County High School TSA CTSO to Louisville, Kentucky for national competition, June twenty-eighth through July the third. Lincoln County High School Skills USA to Atlanta, Georgia for national competition, June the nineteenth through the twenty-third. Unless somebody wants to pull those, any one of those out, or I'm assuming they, we got all the Chevron requirements that we have. Do I have a motion? Mr. Dunn makes a motion. Ms. Hanes, second. Any discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Next item is consider approval of district wellness policy guidelines as presented, that was in the drive, I'm pretty sure. Dr. Heath, anything else on that?
No, I don't have anything else on it.
Yeah, sorry, she is, there you go. Thank you. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Posey moves to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tucker, second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next item is consider approval of request for delayed billing accounts payable by South Lincoln School Cheerleaders.
Yeah, that was, uh, a request from South Lincoln and because they're not gonna have everything and, and everything taken care of as far as the payments, or you actually have, uh... We, we need delayed bill, billing, so it's not an audit finding. Because you're supposed to have everything closed out at the end of the year, but due to the timing of this, uh, uh, they, they wanna be able to pay it after the beginning of next fiscal year, September first, I think that's all. It has to have board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve? Mr. Tucker makes a motion to approve it, do I have a second? Mr. Dunn, second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Now for the fun part. Ms. Stevenson?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I have a few budget amendments that I need approval on, um, beginning in one forty-one. The first one is in the amount of thirty-three thousand dollars, and this is a revision requested by Susan Welch, CTE supervisor. The next one is in the amount of two thousand dollars. This is for the LEAP's budget for salaries and supplies to be used in the summer program in June. The next one is in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven fifty-one, sixty-three, and this is to set up the learning camp grant budget pending E-Plan approval. The next one is in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight seventy-six, fifty-two to set up learning transportation camp grant budget, and that will conclude one forty-one.
Do I have a motion to accept those amendments?
No, we agree.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tallman, second. Any other discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
And then in one forty-two, the first one is in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. This is the budget revision to title one budget based on additional allocation received. The next one is in the amount of a thousand, fifty dollars, and this is budget revision number four for the CTE Perkins Basic, uh, based on revised payroll and other estimates. Uh, the next one is in the amount of five thousand, six hundred, sixty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. This is the CTE Perkins Basic based on revised payroll and other estimates adjustments. The next one is in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred, sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. This one is for, uh, the CTE Perkins Basic based on revised payroll and other estimates. And then the next one is a hundred and forty-nine thousand, one forty-seven, ninety-two. This is the budget revision number two to the SRO three point O based on, uh, revised payroll and other estimates pending E-Plan approval. The next one is in the amount of sixteen thousand, seven forty-one, forty-seven. This is budget revision number four to E-Plan Tennessee All Core Budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the final one in one forty-two is seventy-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and this is to set up the math implementation support grant budget.
Won't you be glad when you see a report that doesn't have COVID in it?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve those amendments? Mr. Tucker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bradford, second. Any other discussion on them? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries. Next is bid results.
Bid results for the school buses, we recommend Central State Bus Sales as they were the only vendor who bid.
How many, is that allocated in the, that we do this year, do you remember? So, are we, are we still on schedule or we're still good? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve that bid?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dunn makes a motion to approve it, do I have a second? Ms. Hanes, second. Any other discussion on it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Motion carries.
Then finally, we have the April twenty twenty-three financial reports for reporting of one forty-one, one forty-three, and one forty-six funds.
Does anybody have any questions on those that's presented? Do I have a motion to accept them as presented? Mr. Tucker makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Tallman, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just wanna comment on, uh, Vicky and Jackie both there, uh, been working really hard with the last several months, uh, in preparing our budgets. Uh, you know, my hat goes off to you guys, because I know, I know as many times as, as we've gone back and forth and making little changes here and there, you've got several, uh, departments that you deal with. So thank you guys very much, I appreciate it. Okay, under points of information, uh, you have a draft of next year's school board calendar, uh, in your packets or in your drive?
There's actually two, there's the original, and then I made a slight revision today, so that's been added today.
Okay, so there's something added today?
Yes.
Okay, and so, uh, but it starts out with a scheduled school board meeting, so be looking over that. If you have any questions, uh, next month is when you vote for that, so we, so we'll have the, uh, board agenda for next year. Uh, that's number one. Uh, number two is, uh, in your shared drives, you have a list of non-tenured teachers to rehire, uh, non-tenured teachers to non-renew, uh, support staff to rehire, and support staff to non-renew. That list is for your information. to non-renew. That list is for your information. Okay?
And that's all I. Ms. Tallman, on the committee, if you were getting Miss Karen when y'all discussed dates, she'll have to post the number in advance of y'all's meeting date on that committee.
At least a week.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Mr. Tucker moves. Do I have a second? Mr. Posey, second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose likewise. Motion carries. We're out of here.